Dumeleng, Dumeleng Bahayetu. I think the senator returned, I agree. We have waited for those that are coming. Even our Abakhud. They already takes their feet up but they are not arriving. I think the senator returned. Our program is not that long. Our program is as follows. Our program is as follows. We are going to ask the speaker to welcome us. It's the speaker of the West Rand District Municipality. And then we will tell you the purpose of the gathering here today. And then from there, we'll share with you the procedure to be followed in making oral and written submissions. This is your meeting, then we'll hand over to your good self to make your oral submissions. And then we'll have closing remarks and way forward. All dependent on you, we can be out of here before 2 o'clock. Then, yeah, that's a small program that we are having. Then, can we all rise and we ask to be led on the singing of the National Anthem? Thank you so much, you might be seated. I don't know what's going on that side. It's one of those things. Can I then welcome all of you present here today? Before we proceed with our program, we want to appreciate you for coming. We really want to appreciate your coming, these are things that we don't take for granted. Because you could have opted to do other things, but you said you are coming, we are going there. So, we really appreciate your coming here today. And then we are looking forward to fruitful and constructive discussions with your good self. I'm mindful of the fact that there are people coming from Mukale City. There are people who are coming from Rendomest Municipality. And then there are people who are coming from Mirafung Municipality. Yes, and then all the stakeholders that has got to do with fire, I know you are all here today. And thanks so much for coming. Let me quickly introduce the team that I'm travelling with. From my right, extreme right. I want to introduce honourable person. He's a member of this committee. Being the Committee on Environment, Forests and Fisheries. He represents the organisation called the Economic Freedom Fighters. And he's originally from the Western Cape. Then next we must introduce honourable Gancho. Honourable Gancho is also a member of this portfolio committee. And then she's from the Eastern Cape. And then she represents the African National Congress in Parliament. And then next to me here, I've got honourable Mkhono. She is also a member of the African National Congress and a member of this committee. And then she's coming from the KwaZulu-Natal Province. I think the man on my left doesn't need any introduction. Agiris, the son of the soil is from this district. His name is Honorable Lumudise. It's a whip of our committee. And then a member of the African National Congress, the party representing Parliament. Myself, I'm Faith Mutambi, I'm the chairperson of the committee. I come from Limpopo. Also a member of Parliament. And then on my extreme left, you must... We are honoured by the presence of the speaker of the West Rand District Municipality. It's councillor Gerard Kruger. And then he's coming from your district municipality. And thank you so much, speaker, for gracing our occasion. Humbling to have you around. Don't be surprised, he has got other commitments, you leave us at 12, it's not absconding. Then let me hand over to him so that he can welcome us.
Thank you very much. Faith. I remember you saying, I forgot it. Mutambi. The portfolio committee. Honourable members, Parliament here today. Councillors, traditional leaders. Community members. And members of the FPA. Staff members who are rendering support for today's event. All protocol observed. I greet you all, good morning, Dumeleng, Khuyamora, Sani Bunani. Institution of the Republic of South Africa grant... Let me try again. Institution of the Republic of... Each citizen, the right to make inputs before Parliament.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the last part, sir.
Okay, let... I get it now. Is it my better? Okay, let me start again. The Constitution of the Republic of South Africa grant each citizen the right to submit and make inputs in legislation with Parliament. This is one of the cornerstones of our democracy, namely public participation, and this is why we are here today. Ladies and gentlemen. My use of this opportunity today here, out of the progress... ...felt the national felt and forest fire amendment bill deal with a very important aspect of our lives and safety. Therefore, we thank you for the public hearing in your district today, here at the chief Mukale Hall at Mukale. Honourable members of Parliament, members of the community, welcome to the West Rand District and I hope and believe that the hearings will be fruitful and advance our democracy. Ladies and gentlemen, I welcome you here again at the public hearings on the national shelter fire amendments bill, and please be part of this...
Thank you councillor Kruger. Speaker of West Rand District Municipality. I was still waiting for somebody to come back so that I can introduce the parliamentary support staff in our midst. You see that table on my right there? There's Miss Giva, who's the manager of that team. And then we've got a committee secretary called King. There's other committee secretary called Lindy. The other committee secretary called Zoleka. Got our committee researcher, his name is Joseph. And then the committee secretary, Chileka. Chileka, she's holding some forms, and when somebody tells you, that's the main person, if there are things that when you're raising, you think they are not adequate enough, ask the person to talk to. ... Oh, they are on social media, on social media. Facebook, YouTube, this other ones, they will be like, or like Sunday, because there are some activities that are taking place in other places. But as you saw, if you watch my channel, one person is serving in my life, that's why you should have a look. And then, and this is also my response, but I thought I somehow quite love TV. Actually, I'm a little bit troubled. And then especially all who firstly look at so, I got that message today. Because we call you the editor of this business. You are on the ground. You are expert on this matter. So, we want to hear a lot from you, myself. And then, we are here today, resting today, we are here holding several conferences, we are visiting. Into the northwest. And two weeks ago, we were in Limpopo. So, this weekend, we are here with yourselves. And then we are coming here to hear your views on the national field and forest fire amendment bill. For those of you who are working in the field, you know, the purpose of this act is to regulate and manage field fires. And this act also then imposes obligations to landowners. Prepare and maintain fire breaks. And then it also makes provision for landowners to make provision for the management of field fires in their own land. Therefore, in this regard, that we are making some key proposed amendments to this deal. We are doing that by enhancing the definitions. And then also addressing the issue of the facilitation and formation of fire protection associations. And then we want municipalities to also facilitate and form fire protection area, fire protection association in the areas of responsibilities. And then we also want to empower traditional leaders in that value chain. And then we also want to make it compulsory for municipalities and other state organs that own and manage, that owns and manage land to join fire protection association. And then you'll also see, the title of that act is too long. On the papers that you are holding, the pink papers. The title of the act is called National Field and Fire Forest Amendment Bill. Then we want to also shorten that title to read the National Field Fire Act. So, that's the reason why we are here today, but what is very important, we are here to listen to your views. You know, your public representatives represent you in Parliament? And you have heard councillor Kruger quoting the constitution? This constitution has tasked us with the responsibility of lawmaking as members of Parliament. And when we do that, as we make the laws. The constitution requires us to consult and seek your views. There's no law that will become a law without hearing what the people are saying about it. That's why we are here to consult with you. I want to plead with you to say you must raise your views without fear of evil. This is your constitutional right to do so. And then we know as we come here normally, there will be issues of service delivery that are going to be raised. We want you to first to be focused, they will tell you what minute you have to focus on the bill first, but also if there are issues that are service delivery related, you are allowed to raise them, but don't lose the focus. We are your representatives, we are also here at the same time coming to listen to you. That's why, in the spirit of cooperative governance enshrined in our constitution. We have invited officials from provincial and local... So that then, if there are issues that relates to their area of responsibilities, they must be able to give you solutions. Yes, then that's why we are saying, let's talk to the bill at end. The good thing about it, your inputs will be, will form part of the decision-making process of this bill at the end. So, I plead with all of you to tell us, how can we better this bill, if there are things that you feel they are outstanding, let us know. So, that's the reason why we are here, and I should think of explaining the overview of the bill. Here, yes. Okay, thank you. Don't seem to have that vibe, maybe we'll hear it, honourable Lumudise said you must mind. Or is the interpreter that's making you not to have this vibe? He's so soft, I can hear that. Okay, can I hand over to honourable Mkhono to... Okay, can I hand over to honorable Mtnunu to share with you the procedures to be followed eh, in making eh oral and... No, 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 I'll do this now. I will have to ask honorable Polson to be the one that's going to deal with the procedure to be followed in making written submissions.
Sizo au niksela ku, nomzano Polson, Polson ukuze, sikuazukthomele izindose tu.
You call him.
Si nikela ku wetawam.
Thank you, Chairperson. Greetings, Chairperson.
Kusakakuluslaalu, si abulisa kwakona.
Honorable Modisi, Honorable Mtnunu, Honorable Gancho.
Ulungo Modisa no Gancho.
The municipal officials, the speaker, he's left us already.
Ukrebao yewa ambah.
Oh, okay. Traditional leaders and residents of the city.
Nkokelizimvelo, muhalisiti, manen na manen kaz.
And the district.
Nestili.
We appreciate your presence.
Si tabesukwa kuenu apa.
We are here to listen.
Sela apoguzi, sene polapule.
This is your parliament.
Lei parlamente yenu.
And you should use this opportunity to have your voices heard.
Ni medenilise benzel thoboguzi ni vyuwe.
We are here to listen to your oral submission.
Sela apoguzi sipulapulizindoinisaguzi thetangamlomo.
You can also hand over a written submission to Tayleka, to my right, if you could just wave to them, Tayleka. Tayleka, wave.
Sizo kala nitomele izindozibalewe yekusisi, na angia kuela kala lungase kholo.
So, the Chairperson will ask you by a show of hands if you would like to make an oral submission.
Au funuktheta uslaalu zautrelo pakamise Isandra.
The Chairperson will then invite you to take a seat here in the middle row.
Uslaalu zautrela ta ekombile, uzosala pangapambile.
Here by the beautiful red chairs.
Kweze shalos boom, vizinche.
Beautiful color.
Lomba lomche.
When you take the microphone, you will first introduce yourself and start by saying whether or not you support the bill.
Sitkala ka ukala, u, ucho ba, uya ukasukanya, ukasalomthetokungelwayo.
And then you have only, how many minutes, Chairperson, how many minutes? Five minutes. That's five minutes, okay? So you're gonna have five minutes of fame where you will appear on national television, on all the social media pages of parliament. Only five minutes.
Oza kugwaimizuzumishana nufele, kui kumachalo sasa zue parlamente.
And we've learned from past that people want to speak forever, five minutes.
Kunga kosaneniki mizuzumishana ngoba, maqawa, kanyu kutsilulayu, sesabetakala.
Okay. So you have five minutes in which to elaborate on your submission, say why you support it, why you don't support it, anything you think that the committee must know.
Unemizuzumishana u, ukaza, bakute u, ukasa lomthetokungelwayo, kanyu ngapasun.
Your submission can be as an individual or as an organization.
Ungafakislo ngozo sakho, nje... Ungafakislo ngozo sakho u wedwa, nama nje ngentanga no.
As a political party.
Nje ngaitwe buleze politiki.
Civic organization.
Nje ngomkanru.
Or as farmers.
Nomajengabalimi.
Are the farmers here in West Rand?
Ingabe.
Are the farmers here? Are the farmers here?
Ingabe abalimi bakon.
Okay. Oh, the speaker's a farmer. Okay, alright. Okay. The written submission can be done on the form in the documents which Tayleka is handing out now.
Islo ngozo sakho singapalwa pansi, eh, esmzuzona emine nje kpele.
So at the end of this public hearing, you can hand those forms back to Tayleka. Thank you very much.
Bese kuti, lesos paga miso, nama islo ngozo sakho spale pansi, uslete lapa ngapambili, ngapama utulomshaga ne upel.
Over to you, Chair.
Snigali indamba kuweke slaro.
Thank you, Honorable Polson.
Ngabonga, ngakulumshonisha u Polson.
Eh, we are trying to address the sound issue, ne, I can see the problem.
Si zamukuti slunge ise eh, the sound, ngabona ukuti zi, ingi nga uwa manja.
Can you hear me properly now?
Ningezwa kashenonge.
Much better.
Sekungono yin.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Honorable Polson, for the outlining the procedure.
Si abonga ngakulumshonisha u Polson, ngokuti usho, kuti siyinisazatuso kubala apa, ngokuti sizo kobaganjani.
Let's, let, let's, let's stick to our allocated time eh.
Ah, gesihlale skatine snigazwe soona.
So that we can give others also the opportunity to speak.
Ukuze, sizo ukuza kuti snigaze, abanyituba lo kuti babeno ovonabo.
I'm gonna start on this row. There's a passage in between the first row on my left.
Ngizo kala Isandra, nsamsesnguele.
I need people who want to speak to raise their hands.
Ngii, funabanda ba funukuluma, bese be paga misa Isandra zabo.
Row.
Gu, lolushango ti lesunguele.
Can they, can, can you stand up and you'll be shown where to sit?
Ningapagama, nizoboniswa kuti, nizomapi.
Now, those that have raised their hands, can they stand up?
Labo abapaga misa Isandra, bangapagama?
I'm not gonna come back once I say this row and then it don't raise your hands. This row, are we done?
Angegeng sabuya, umunga paga misa Isandra sakho, uma uglolishango ti lesunguele, ngayeku sapindu thwaleli nyitube.
Then can I come to this one?
Ngizo zage gu le row epa, epagati.
Can I see ends?
Ngabonisandra.
There's no end on this row.
Agayeko paga misa Isandra, ngakle ndao.
Can they move to the... Those of you who are shy.
Abanyabenu, abana mashoni.
Eh, Chileka is standing there, the back, she's holding the forms, ne?
Uchileke, ulapaya emova, upetama form, gula bo abane imshoni.
And opt to write instead of coming to speak.
Ninga, yaguieke, bese niyapala pansi, ngokuti nize, lapa umanini intro.
So are we done on this side?
Si kaidile ngakulolishango ti.
When... No, it's fine. No, no, it's fine, we'll take the next page. The first speaker, ready, she's still writing eh?
Ozokuluma kalu sapal.
You're free to speak in any language of your choice.
Ukuleki lukuluma nganoma ilupulimi olthandayo.
It can be, even if it's sign language.
Ngisho nama ulwi mlwesandra.
I see there are some dominant languages that are being spoken by the interpreters.
Ngabona ukutikne ilimeyninga, ne kulunya bahumushbe thulaapa.
But if it's a language that you speak, you can speak the interpreter.
Ulwi minjol, kulumayo, ngakuluma bonabazu tolika.
Alivon.
Siabonga.
Over to you, ma.
Si nigali indamba kuweke mama. Ngii, nbingalelenonke? I stay in Bloomfontaine. Ngii, umlimi lapa etrufontaine.
Can, can, can I again repeat what people must...
Our problem is that sometimes the fire. So when it's set alight at night, you are unable to wake up to extinguish it.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, that microphone, whoever's dealing with our microphone, please, we can't hear. Can you attend to it? I personally didn't even hear what is her name, where she's coming from.
I microphone lena, I sebenziga, shangoba, angilzwangi kamalake, ngokuti uvelaapi.
And then ourselves, we speak these languages, we don't rely on you, we rely on the speaker in certain times. We need to hear what she's saying.
Tinagas kulumulimolfana, naloyo kulumayo, sitlaku ye, asla leli umhumushilon. Ta bakulumina wema.
Bulelem.
The fire sometimes it's set alight at night while you are still asleep. So when we are asleep, that fire actually, it disturbs us. And the fire, it, it's at a higher peak when it's set alight.
That, sorry, 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 sorry mama. The mic guy, that mic is not working.
Umundo lungi sama mic, skelu lungi si mic, le yongo by sebenz.
Your service provider, we have expected you to test your facilities before we come in here.
Umletingonzo, beslinda, ngokuti ulungi sizi indozako, ngapama ngokutu ilete lapa.
The danger of the others not hearing her, they are going to repeat because they didn't hear what she said.
Inkingu kuti, u, mabandubenga mozu, bazo pinda lokakshi ilofuti.
Can you attend to the microphone, please?
Ah, ageni lungi seni mic.
Sorry, ne?
Ukolo mama seko.
Can you try again, let's hear?
Ungaza mafuti. Ukuluma, nominee. Nominee ti ma. (laughing).
One two. Testing.
Umfunu vela gui gui gui, umfunu vena gui la.
One two.
I'm sure that that'll pass.
One two, one two. Testing. One two. One two, one two. One two, testing, one, one two, one two, one two, one two, one two, one two. Testing, one. One two. One two, one two. One two, one two, one two. One two, one two, one two. Testing. One two. One two, one two. One two, one two, one two, one two. One two. One two, one two. One two, one two, one two, one two. One two, one two. Testing, one. One two.
(laughing) Melego kasa. Melego kasa. Ta, kela na nga.
One two, one two, one two. One two, one two. (bell) One two. One two, one two, one two. One two, one two, one two, one two. One two, one two. One two.
Eh, kiri rimeri se apen.
Ngii, nbingalele futi.
Ibiso lakaki, bitris morava.
Ikamalame ngu, bitris morava.
Ikovaro meri savome. Me iswambe.
Ngii, bingalela bonke, oh mama.
Eh, ndikozula ritfontaine.
Ngisalale, eh ritfontaine.
Atsya divasun, orndiyambe chisutu kanashivenda kanami.
Angas, nama ankulumisutu, nama ankulumisutu.
Farandido zama, orndiyambe chisutu.
Goda angzo zama, kuti ankulumisutu.
Eh, la, mu, mu lo oritwenya, ki, kimu lo otambusiwu.
Lomlilo supayo, oyayukalepsugu.
Eh, kovane rirobes, kana ku ewu.
Ngoba silale ngaliyososaka.
And baritiseza rirobes.
Futi bashisa slale.
And how it amu lo otama ilaudimu.
If you he, you hear that the fire is blazing.
How it does ama ilaudimu, uchisa everything.
When it's blazing like that, it destroys everything.
That twenty nineteen.
In twenty nineteen?
Kialima, I'm a farmer.
Ngii, umlimi?
Eh, uchisiswa lidi, lidi cabbage isaka.
It even burned my cabbage.
Lidi, lidi pipe, irrigation system.
It burned my gas system.
Pomposame, simohua chiswa kauri, mu lo o fita risa, risa, risa nahana.
Even the water taps and the, and the taps themselves were burned because the fire just comes when we are not away.
So area ya runanerebata hotsiba hantewari, luna, dekaritusa kain.
So in our area, we want to know, how can you help us?
Because, liha we answer a fire belt. Fire belt.
Because even if you've got a fire belt.
Mu lo agen.
The fire does come in.
So harisivu eh, lidi leso relitavezi, relitavezi horidori, lidori thusa.
As you are here, we are happy, we are hoping you are here to help us.
Wanachi, akisana irrig, ma, kesontorikireke engweha.
Right now, I don't even have the irrigation system, I have to buy another one.
And chelitaha iyo.
And I don't have money.
Deke kupahore.
I want to ask you.
Liri thuse, or ritfontaine, mushamo hovelis something erikar yesangore, havana limu lo rholo tima.
To help us in ritfontaine, that if there is fire, we can be able to extinguish it if you give us some... To help us in Red Fountain, that if there is fire, we can be able to extinguish it if you give us some equipment.
Because you're a red fountain.
Just think of the fire that comes at night. Nobody's there to help you.
So because you're a red fountain.
So we want to ask if maybe you have a plan that you can help us with.
Red Fountain, what place is it?
In Red Fountain, we have big farming.
Because you're a red fountain.
We've got mountains where our cattle grazed.
So because you're a red fountain.
They burn everything up to that.
And I don't want to do that.
And you won't know who has burned that place.
Because you're a red fountain.
The fire will just start at night.
So because you're a red fountain.
We are happy that you are here to help us.
Because you're a red fountain.
I have thirty-two years as a resident of Red Fountain.
But I have no improvement. Because you're a red fountain.
I'm still struggling up to now because of the fire.
Because you're a red fountain.
The felt fire, it burns even the wire that you've put around.
So because you're a red fountain. Red Fountain, the sky is more raw.
So when you speak about your matters, please don't leave Red Fountain behind.
Between Orange Farm and Porky, we are in the middle. So because you're a red fountain.
We want to ask you because you came with a nice thing.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you very much. Olande, lai. I'm going to go back and get the camera. Greetings. My name is Obri Tebe.
Not the Tebe, Tebe.
Obri Tebe?
Eh, nothing. I'm happy now. I was angry, very, very angry because I was born in that day. But I'm still angry.
Mrs. Faith?
Yeah. Program here have. As we people living with disability, I'm brave. Come to us, to the field, and listen to us. Because now, you are dictator to us in people living with disability. As a leader, because now, when I see there, in front, there's no people with disability there.
I'm unhappy because I see that you don't care about people who've got disability. Even in front there, I don't see anyone with a disability. So that's why I'm angry. You don't even have a brain. Come to us in the ground and speak with the people who are living with disability.
I want to take that anger out. As long as they're in the country. Come down to the grass and come and see what we are doing, people living with disability.
Ms. Faith, I'm very, very angry, but you must come to us as the farmers who are living with disability to see what we are doing. Come to the ground so that you can see our work.
Then, we are going to tell you. Because now. I want you one on one.
Going forward, I have no words because I'm very, very angry. I just want to speak with you one on one. Come to us.
I want you, come to us, then us will tell you what we are needed, what we need. I, I can't speak. Because now, the Fed will implement a sign language in the tough language.
But I'm very happy to see an interpreter who's doing sign language is here also.
If I'm going to see. But now, what we are doing, we people living with disability.
I'm going to go back and get the camera. Because you're a red fountain.
But now, on the ground, we are not first priority. We just say, a ground. Come and, because now, we are not present in you.
Well, when it comes to us, we are nothing to you. Actually, you are the first priority, but we are just citizens.
Then. I'm Obri Ched. I'm from Rand West. Ward 31. Yes.
I'm going to go back and get the camera. Because you're a red fountain.
My number one.
My number one. Cheperson, I'd like to greet you.
Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to greet you, Cheperson.
Because you're a red fountain. Because you're a red fountain. Because you're a red fountain. Because you're a red fountain.
Okay, Cheperson. Apology accepted. Because you're a red fountain.
My name is Bojiso.
Housebeaver.
Eh, Housebeaver. Bojiso, Housebeaver.
Eh, it's a, it's a GNP Enterprise. Eh, a company eh, formed in 2017.
I'm from a company that was formed in 2017 called Clem Bay Enterprise.
Eh, good GNP Enterprise, right?
Eh, 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 eh.
Okay, eh, Western area. Rand West, Ward 25.
Rand West, Ward 25, Western area.
Eh, right, in terms of business.
We do various things in terms of business.
Eh, farming, eh, interest in livestock.
Farming is one of the things that we do if we have an interest in livestock.
So we encounter eh, valid facts.
Now, an issue that we are encountering is regarding to the land.
Eh, you'll go to Maspa, you'll go to the mine, mine, you'll go to the mine, mine, you'll go to the mine.
Now, when we try to acquire a land such as plots, you go to the municipality. The municipality will tell you that this land belongs to the mine. You go to the mine, the mine tells you that this plot belongs to the municipality.
And that kind of problem is, is persistent. Okay, I'll give you a question. I resolve in terms of what you say.
Now, this matter has been persisting, escalating, and it is not assisting the farmers.
So because you're a red fountain.
Now, may I humbly request your assistance in this matter?
Eh, it's a funding. Funding is a challenge, eh, company.
Now, the next thing I want to jump to is with regard to funding. Eh, more especially with the work that we do as farmers.
Eh, the setup.
Such setups that you have done, like you have done today?
Eh, we are sitting now.
Do you sometimes give us hope as you are sitting in front?
But as soon as we have been referred to the offices, they want to do it too.
But. But. Then we encounter problems. Not knowing if it is the people who are working at the office, they're not equipped enough or skilled enough to do their work?
Okay, it's a funding. So it's a.
When, okay, I'm going to leave the matter of funding, now I'm going to SARS.
So because assistance is still.
I'm still asking for assistance, even with the matter regarding SARS.
Eh, SARS is a simple fire system. I want to modify and all that.
Yes, SARS has tried to simplify its mechanism. We see it also on TV and other medias.
So the challenge, eh, the office is, eh, you can, eh, agent. Or maybe, eh, a private agent whereby, eh, this is a, eh, as an individual.
Now, the problem we encounter with SARS is that some of the offices are not opened. So now, whereby you can get assistance from an agent from SARS. So it drives us to look for agents, private agents, who are costly. And now, this has a hindrance on the business that we have, and also our business is not making too much money.
So, regarding to, eh, it's not only farming, it's business in general. In terms of all those things, second dimension. Because of times, there are some people behind.
Now, I would be very glad if you can assist us with the matters that are raised. It is not only in farming, but it is business in general in the townships. There are other matters that I would have liked to raise, but because of time constraints and the people behind me who also like to speak, I'd like to leave it there.
Uh, uh, uh.
Uh. I'd like to greet you all there in the front. And everyone present here.
Daniel Novella.
My name is Daniel, eh.
Novella.
Novella.
It's a good Rand West. Eh, western area.
I'm a Rand West resident in Waidela.
So.
Eh, Waidela, Ward 33.
Eh, because you're a red fountain.
My reason for. My reason for coming here, although my previous colleague has mentioned other things, I won't take long. Here's the things that I'd like to mention.
Eh, because you're a red fountain. Most of the disabilities are, eh, because you're a red fountain. But, eh, because you're a red fountain. Because you're a red fountain.
Now, where I come from, eh, we have a lot of people living with disability that have a lot of skill, but they lack knowledge. Eh, and also, our leaders, eh, they do not give us such information.
Eh, 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 because you're a farmer, eh, you're a farmer. Because you're a red fountain.
Yes, eh, I'm also a farmer. I love to farm.
So, eh, because you're a red fountain. 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 Because you're a red fountain.
Now.
Because you're a farmer.
Now, what the government can assist us with, more so us people who are living with disabilities, it is to ask you, how can you encourage us or influence us for us to have the drive to have businesses and also have an income as people with disabilities? I would like to make it close here. Thank you very much. Before the gentleman leaves.
Because you're a red fountain. Because you're a red fountain.
I fully agree with it. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tembi Kosa from Khutong. Eh, we are under Merafon District. We have a project named Together Moving Forward. We commenced this project in 2021 and it specializes in farming. Now, the challenge that we're encountering with this matter, it is that the municipality does not want to give us.
This agreement?
Eh, they do not want to enter into this agreement.
So. But we can't embarrass it at any time.
Now, there are other challenges that we're encountering, such as we cannot fence the area that we're working to stop eh, the criminals from entering our premises and eh.
The Maspa. The Maspa.
Municipality. And we are in the township. What man?
Eh, we are in Ward 1.
Ward 1 in Carltonville. Yeah, Ward 1. Because. Because NPR, eh, eh, eh. I'm thankful that I have someone present for me.
Yeah.
Now, this challenge that we're encountering makes us have more challenges because.
The organization is a private.
There are private organizations that are. There are private organizations that are able to assist us. But now they say that as long as we do not have this agreement, they cannot be of assistance to us. Now, this agreement matter is the one that's halting our project because we cannot move forward without it. Now, I'm pleading with you to please assist us because our project, as the name says, it is moving forward. You're not supposed to be standing in one place, but you're supposed to be moving forward. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm from Merafong.
My name is Nungvuo. My surname is Nkaya.
I'm a farmer. I hear what you're talking about, about the felled fires. The previous speaker spoke about something very important, a lease agreement. I got a place. I got it last year. It was the 21st of September, as we are in September. But it's very hard for us to move forward because we don't have a lease agreement. Chepesen, you spoke about the felled fires, and that is very important because it destroys our crops and our farms. Besides destroying our farms and our crops, we have to protect nature. Because we, as the elderly, we suffer because now we cannot go to the field and pick up some trees or some plants that can help us at home. All traditional healers. Another problem we are encountering, Chepesen, is that the place that we have is not enough. We cannot farm and have cattle at the same time. And our biggest problem, one of the biggest problems we have, is that the places we have, they belong to the mine. If you can speak on our behalf to the mines so that they can give us land so that we can work the land because it is a big part of our economy. I can simply call it a garden because it's small. We cannot produce something that we can send to the market so that we can have money or make a living out of it. Please help us. We are very happy that you are here today, listening to us because now we are not sure, because you are in the ground, that whenever we send you to say something or make a decision on our behalf, that you surely make so. Please help us with the things that we can use to work. Please help us with the fencing issue as well. Please help us with the safety issue because the criminals, they come in and they steal from us. Maybe you will show us the way forward because we do want to be farmers, we do want to own cattle, and we do want to do farming. They steal from us because we don't have fence. The fires destroy our production because we don't have fences. If you have fenced using a plank or a wood, a wooden substance, the fire burns that wood down and then you lose everything. Thank you.
I would like to share in the parliament's table. And all the people who are present in this community hall. The person speaking here is Matham Nisi from Carltonville. I represent Merafong Pharmacy. Merafong Farming Association. Where we started first with a company called Zenzeli Project.
Zenzeli Mata Project.
So I help people in Merafong, also the youth and the people living with disabilities, to motivate them. I'm very thankful to see the parliament present with us today. Because in Merafong, we have a problem with the fires. So we have a difficulty with planting because the space is small. The by workers, especially those who smoke, they will just leave the cigarette butts without distinguishing them. Now, our children, when they come from school, they will take these cigarette butts and then light them up and then causes fire in our farms. Now, that is the problem that we're encountering in Merafong because we cannot... Because we also have criminals in the area. The criminals enter into our farms with weapons and then they want to take everything from us. So we want to ask the government for a solution to our problems so that we can plant farm in peace. Secondly. I have a problem and complaining about our farming in our area. There are many things that we cannot reach, more so with the land and the farms. For us since 2019 and also during COVID period, that we do not have enough land for us to farm. And also when you go seek for assistance at the municipality, we do not get such assistance. So I'm very glad that the parliament has come to us today because I have a problem that I don't know where to run to because I'm being sent from pillar to post, but I'm very glad that I'm speaking to you directly. So I'm humbly asking for your assistance so that with the matters that I've raised. Now, last week, the criminals invaded my farm and also they burnt the portion of my farm. And it is close to the police station where I'm farming. So my farm is dilapidated. It doesn't have tools, it doesn't have equipment, it doesn't have anything that I can use to farm. Now, I'm trying to train and help the youth in Merafong, but now with the problems that I'm encountering, they also give up because they cannot get the assistance and the training that they need to receive.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
From this first row. I have hands from this side, this one. There are two rows, the first one. There's somebody at the back. Did you sign the register?
I'll sign the register. Yes. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. My name is. From Merafong. I'm a farmer. Our problem is that we do not have water. And that is a major problem of water. If you can assist us with water as farmers. And also with fencing to camp our farm. Because we have a problem with criminals. Our animals are being taken by the criminals and not been taken by the fire. We are pleading for water, please. I've been a farmer in Merafong for more than 10 years. But if you go around the area, there's no one who has a toilet. Even a person who has a toilet, it is a plan that he has made overnight. Can you please assist us even with a temporary toilet? Because we do not have a toilet and that is a problem. Can you imagine if a person has a runny stomach right in the farm? Thank you very much.
Good greetings to you all, greetings to you all. My name is Amun Mudise.
Peter.
Peter Mudise. I'm from Makhali City.
Organization in the African National Congress.
From the organization called African National Congress?
On page four. Number two.
Number two?
I give only little bit. Public safety.
There is no public safety entered there?
And the local leaders.
And local leaders?
In the event, the hamulo otwari inside the location.
I just want to know, in the event where there is fire in the location?
I see the forest officers, the police officers and the peace officers. Public safety and the local leaders.
I don't see public safety. I request that it must be added here.
Which in this case will be the counselor. The land is everywhere.
Right? We know that the land is everywhere?
So, mullo otwara everywhere.
The fire can catch everywhere?
So, more eventing, likwe tefale kore, the land owner can elohore sometimes, otana reliable for, for, for mulo o.
Can you repeat yourself, please, say? Repeat yourself, the land owner is?
Let me see, kibale tewi bona eh.
Let me read what I'm seeing here.
Where the land owner?
Mule nuro mualifazi.
Yes, akereke enole kore, otana reliable for mulo o.
He's the one who will be reliable for the fire?
Eh, isueki wangayona.
That is what I'm now mentioning here.
Kukopale eh, the?
I request that you add?
On the bill, kore.
On the bill?
The municipalities should also be penalized or be held responsible.
Ba maspala lewana, basundurba rola maikarabelo, basundurba othlaywe.
Hamulo otweri without monitor.
We, when fire had catched without being monitored?
Kayiti kodi maspala, they are responsible for the grass cutting yalo le yalo.
I know at the municipality, they are also responsible?
Ena kababati mulo uchi siwa.
That they don't want anyone to set fire?
Now. Hamaspala opaluwa kere otika care about its local community, oro take care about the grass cutting.
If the municipality cannot take care of the community?
Community ife leta iti samulo because kahaykudi le mopela mankwa.
Because the community will end up setting the grasses on fire because there's long grasses grown there?
Now, this district municipality and the local municipality should be penalized for this thing.
Ba maspala, ba ma, ba ba mule, basile khaile bakontle, basundurba othlaywe.
On page six.
Mulete kalanlabo rataro?
Eh, three point six, I think it plus six.
Three point?
Three point six plus six.
What's three point six plus, plus six?
Plus six, amend section twenty-six of the act which deals with implementation of chapter eight. The clause provides for the inclusion of peace officers and traditional leaders to enforce the act.
Mule nuro kaku pia kore, badira lapuso, badira la ba, ba ba, badira lapuso, valo kwa maspala, le valo kwa badira la ba, ba litro, basetro, basundurba tusanemoo.
Let us include those local people, local leaders, municipality and traffic officers for us kore, level ona ba, 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 take a part on this day.
Let's include them also that they can take part to the traditional leaders. The police must also be involved to help us resolve this problem.
Because I understand that the peace officers, kiba tewa nuro kore, bako district level.
I, yeah, this is how the peace officers, they are on district level.
Banaleba tewa roba bita in the fire brigade.
They are, they have people who are called fire brigades.
Batla karonali a query that is been lodged, kore, honali mulo, ke kore batla.
They just come in when there are summons, if there's fire there.
So we want?
They will come when there's a query.
So we wanted people who are based on these locations to take care of this fire.
Re batla, batwa nuro batte moma filong, ah, hor, enne bona, batse yan, maikarabelo kota, batza tsetya rotadiro gala ina, kahonalitabaya, ya mufita o.
So that the risk are penalized, the poor people obonankore, kahaykudi le and is dangerous to yourself or to himself.
So that we cannot penalize who is responsible for this and so that we can also see that the grass is being moved, the long grasses that will end up causing the fire.
Thank you very much. Eh, inmala macha baolo?
I greet you all.
Kalibizo kika tlayo malebu.
My name is Katlehomalebu.
It's a red fonte.
It's a gold fonte.
Namu kiduwangte, mukiswante, we've been?
Where I reside and where I come from?
Been part of the first beneficiary sahouting farmers program.
Ba okibalo, lo rekiwa unwe la, ba lo rekiwa mo houting, program efika akutu.
Houting farmers program.
Ke bahouting, ba lo rekiwa limi?
Re-benefitted the plots from government and it's been more than thirty years from. So sa, egelongwa, na, o.
They are from?
Baswadi barona desa ba benefitted the, the plasi from government.
Our parents had already benefited the farms, I was still young when they started to get those farms.
So, right now, my question kore, how do you protect what's not yours?
How?
How do you protect what's not yours?
Otosirela tayanso ilinsa hako.
Because leading invaders, eh, the people who, with lay morba, zetamelo, by etadi criminal activities.
There are people invaders who trespass there, do criminal activities.
Ba, baruza fe la straightore, this land asialo, na kia government.
They will tell you straightforward that this land does not belong to you, it belongs to the government.
Eh, baruza ore, when you go to the police station, o bula kisi ore.
When you go to the police and report a case?
Onali land invasion, onali mulo, batro kozabo the rightful owners.
They will, they will go and report a case to the police about fire or land invasion, they will tell you that go to the owners.
Eh, ne kudile, eh, tabayadi lease, land agreements.
I've heard some ladies speaking about lease, lease agreements.
So, and, how, what are the equipment, to buy equipment, to make time for yourself, ola nse melo, ola nse everything? You can't because you go to a bank, you tell about your financial, five, your finances, you zaka chalit.
Even when you go and ask for finances for equipment, fire extinguishing equipment, you go to the bank, they will ask you questions, what are you going to do with the money?
Outulao sheba, eh, all the white farmers, baho onoro ba prevent the fires, baho onoshe visa the plasi, they have the equipment.
If you can look at white farmers, they do have those equipments, they can manage their farms with those equipments.
I'm talking specifically from my area, we do have one white farmer, eh, yildiakao fe la, ye li chenevri, is successful.
Eh, akibu akamu limirui wa nuro kilokoa, oh, his lease is so successful, every year has been renewed.
And then again, o sheba, the black farmers, we are failing consistently.
Eh, you look at the black farmers, we are, we've been failed consistently.
There are no doors more hona kore, you know, kyozo, or na retuse financial.
There is no doors that we can knock on where we can give, we get assistance.
Then, onali the other groups, like bo Afri Forum, they assist to one white farmers.
There are groups like Afri Forums who have been assisting this white farmer.
Ona is black farmers, we feel re-neglected, eh, and youth.
We as black farmers, we get, we are rejected, and you?
Eh, li you feel ona, reading, resama uladi, fora amuzelinsa rona, reali.
We as youth, we try to open our own forums or register our own forums.
Reali karekomba the, all the physical issues, sa plasi.
We try to convert all the other issues at the farms.
But, eh, again, we are disappointed, daona tu, so ona, eh, le so, olere ngasi.
We end up being disappointed, there's no hand that can, eh, eh, there's no hand that can give us help.
It may be, eh, reggae equipment, eh, to fight the fires, to fight the criminal activities that are along around our areas, still ona next to seretola.
If we can be assisted with criminals who invade our farms or if we can be helped with equipments? Extinguish fires, but you don't get any help.
Onana kere, parliament, personal, in a group of fellow like, resolving the, the lease, the tightly, eh, ripone owners farmers, or how do we work on our farms, how do we protect and save our farms from?
I'm humbly pleading with the parliament to come and assist us and give us guidance, how are we going to deal if we have fire problems?
Because without any financial backup, we are not going anywhere, rego mula sereliso.
One day, hamatoli, hakuna kopekore angoting.
Sekilovida travaolo.
I thank you all. Which language?
Word.
Pardon?
Ikamalami ndinguninawe.
Father speaking?
Ikamalami ndinguninawe.
My name is Mninawe. My surname is? Mnwana.
Police sakuninonge base parliament.
I greet you all at the parliament. And I would like to greet everyone who is in attendance today. I'm from Wedela Carltonville and we as farmers, we experience many problems.
So, paya ey wedela, sinengagiti na, akunamshaa.
In Wedela, we don't have land. We are under the mine. We are very limited in our farming because we are experiencing issues with our municipality.
So, asina manzi food.
We don't have water. I have twenty-eight years being a farmer in that particular area. I don't have water and I'm...